Good evening. I would like to call the February 5, 2019 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to Order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I do not have any announcements this evening. Is there anyone here for anything that is not currently on our agenda? Seeing as none, we'll go right to the first item.
Hey, um, yeah, I got one item.
Oh, you do?
Yep.
All right. Come on up.
I think Matt and Rich are pretty familiar with this back and forth. My name's Les Stevens, 31 Brookside Drive. So roughly what, back in January of 2018, discussed a matter, an issue concerning the conservation fees with both Matt and Rich from town council. And we had a few exchanges of email during January of 2018. And I think the conclusion was that there were some improper steps taken when the fees were set up. Also, there's a concern related to the master and a lot of referencing, you know, the procedures and steps that need to be taken, setting up those fees, and whether there's, you know, two fees for the same service. Rich, Matt, Nathan? Nothing?
You're looking at me.
Yeah, well. So I sent a notice in September of 18 that you guys should have received it in your packet. It's stamped, you know, the selectman as well, just regarding, you know, a discussion so we could, you know, formality of the conclusion. What town council came back with was, prior to that, was stating the fact that if the procedure and steps weren't followed, then the fee, you know, is invalid. That was discussed in January, so.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman. Les is right. But really what would almost be involved in this, it's almost like a forensic audit. I mean, I don't want to aggrandize, you know, what's involved, but the boards have authority to adopt certain fees and they're traceable to certain legal sources. Now, one legal source that we had identified was the ability to adopt fees that are proportionate to the type of service that was being rendered, certain clearance approvals needed by the Board of Selectmen. However, and it appeared that the steps that would have been necessary to implement those types of fees hadn't all been completed, so certainly fees that were coming from that particular legal source would be open to question. However, there is another legal source that I think needs to be looked at, and I believe that I had sent the department a request, just asking for some clarification on it. Under the Wetlands Protection Act and under Chapter 40, Section 8C, I believe, and I'm sorry, I don't have the statute right for that, but I think I'm right. The Commission is allowed to adopt certain processing fees in a manner that's different from the one that we had explored earlier. And so I think the thing that needs to be pinned down before we can reach any final conclusion as to the legitimacy of the fees is, you know, what source of authority is being tapped here for the fees that are being assessed? And, you know, I've looked into it, I've asked, I don't know, I don't have that information. What might be useful would be, the next time I come out, if I could sit down with a member of the department, or the member of the department who had the best handle on the fees that were charged, and maybe be in a position to one-on-one ask some questions about, well, how does this fee line up with that statute, or does it line up with that statute? You know, it gets back to what I called a forensic audit in the beginning. Just what are these fees and what are you relying on when you assess them? I mean, clearly, if they were from this one statute that we had talked about, no go. But the question is, do they come from 8C?
There's already a fee established related to that, so you're already charging a local wetland fee related to this. So this is an additional fee, which, you know, the law you referenced actually says that if you are utilizing this law, it would supersede any other fee. So you can't have two fees for the same service. So we're clear on that. So, and then the fact of the steps and the procedure related to the law that you referenced as well, that, you know, if you follow the procedures of adoption, and which was followed by the Board of Health during that timeframe, but was not followed by the Conservation Board.
A face-to-face, well, I don't want to make it sound ominous, but a face-to-face discussion on the subject might shed some light on it and let us close it out.
I think it would shed light on it, and the sooner we can do that, the better.
What's the remedy, though? I mean, so this is where...
I guess you're at the, to what end?
To what end? I mean, if we start, if we had to refund every single fee we receive, I've already told you this, the town would disgorge $72,000. I don't know where we're going to find the money, dare I use the money, that word, but in the regular course of business over the last decade, the town has collected this fee and no one has protested. There's a point at which, you know, if the Commission thought it was following its regulation, which allows it to set a fee, nobody protested for such a long time. The town consistently collected that fee over a long period of time. What are we going to do here? I mean, some of the people who paid that fee are probably dead. Right? Do we create an auction where first come, first served?
Well, it's not, it goes back to the applicant, right? So the applicant turned around, basically paid a fee for two services or paid an invalid fee. You know what I mean? So we can debate how, you know, how that goes about, but, you know, you know, just the fact that you think of it as, you know, the town deserves it, and I take it as more of the person paying.
No, don't put words in my mouth. No, don't ever do that to me. I didn't say the town deserves it. I said the town board thought that it was acting in accordance with its own statute. That doesn't mean they deserve it last. Don't start with that. What I'm telling you is, first of all, you don't even have standing to bring this issue up because you didn't pay the fee in the end. You passed the fee on to your client, didn't you?
I paid the fee.
Why didn't you pass it on to your client?
I can show you the checks. I mean...
But why didn't you pass it? How do we know that you didn't pass it on to your client? Are you going to produce all those bills too?
If, Matt, if that's the way of reflecting it, it's saying, pass it along to the next person. I mean, that's not the...
It is common practice to pass building permit fees and everything on through to your clients as part of your contract. So I would want to see the whole thing, the contract you had with those clients, all of your invoices, everything they were billed for and what they paid, because I don't really think you even have the standing to bring this. And if you chose not to pass the fee on, that's your choice as a businessman.
All right.
It's a lot of money to be so cavalier about because you want your $600 bucks back.
No, I thought you meant that. I think that was established correctly to begin with, and other communities don't even have the fee.
So then will you accept the resolution that going forward, the process would be followed and everybody who paid the fee is out the fee? Because the town's just going to bring back the fee in the same form that's been charged for the last 10 years.
It's one of the things that you and I discussed early on, was try to, you know...
I know, and I don't understand that, you know, for $600, you're going to put your town in the position of having to come up with $72,000. I think that's outrageous behavior. That's all.
Mr. Vaughn? Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, well, first, I want to have the face-to-face because until that happens, the rest of it's an abstract discussion. Having said that, I'll jump to the abstract discussion for half a second. Well, a little longer than half a second. The types, if there's been an incorrectly assessed fee, there are going to be a lot of legal issues to have to deal with. They ain't going to be dealt with, but let me just at least identify, you know, sort of point of view of issue spotting, what some of the issues are going to be. Number one, under the Municipal Finance Act, we can't pay out things for which there is no appropriation. So that's an issue. There are issues as to statute of limitations, there are issues as to exhaustion of administrative remedies that might have been available at the time. There's the issue of latches, which means, it's a question of the way. There's a question of unclean hands. No, I'm not going to say, you have unclean hands, but just apropos of your comments...
Equitable doctrine of unclean hands.
If, you know, a hypothetical person who had been improperly charged a fee then passed it on, and there wasn't some adjustment, perhaps they have unclean hands. I'm not saying that about you, Les. You know, so there's a lot on the table to deal with. I think a lot, I have been, perhaps unfortunately for me, been giving it a lot of thought. We'll get to all that on my next office hour visit. I will meet with the person that you designate to be the most knowledgeable on it, and, or most people, plural, and we'll get to the bottom of it.
That's the long and the short of it, is the first thing that we need to do is find out if there's a "there" there. That's kind of how I'm seeing it.
And that was, there was a point going back and forth with Rich and Matt, you know, I mean, over the past year, was sit down, discuss what the next things, get to the "there" there, you know, get to the whole process, you know what I mean? So...
That's been very cordial.
And it's, you know, I mean, it's been saying, you know, if it is wrong, then stop, stop the practice, right? And implement something that's the correct practice and stuff like that. So we've gone back and forth, but I think it's, you know, seeing that progress over the past year, you know, we're not there. So we're over a year later, you know, and over, you know, four months later of saying, you know, asking for a sit-down to discuss it more.
Are you willing to accept Rich's next office hours, I don't know when they are, that he will sit down and discover if there's a "there" there? Like, that's the easiest way to look at it?
That's the goal.
Yeah, not that I don't want to meet with Les, I'm happy to, but for me, it's more important to actually meet with the conservation folks.
Okay. When you...
Internal discussion.
Yeah, and when you do that and get a summation and based off what your thoughts are, do your research and get a report off to myself and Matt and the rest of the board, and we'll put you on the agenda to sit down and figure out what the rest of it is from that point. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's fair enough. So, appreciate it.
Thank you, Les.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has anything that is not currently on my agenda this evening? Can I really say seeing as there's none now? All right, seeing as there's none?
Well, I do want to just paint a picture for me. This wasn't on our agenda. So the Conservation Commission charges a certain fee for a job or improvements.
It's a local bylaw fee of $300 per application. There are two applications in question. My interpretation of the last year and four months is that we've given the answer already multiple times that there isn't a "there" there. That was the conclusion of the earlier conversations, because it comes down to this rat hole of, you know, what did town meeting do way back when they adopted the local wetland bylaw? Was it the understanding of the people who voted that they were giving the ConCon the authority to issue those fees? And the town is, not only has the town collected those fees, but there have been transfers from those accounts to support the town, so...
I want to, Mr. Chairman, I want to give you...
It becomes one of those things, you know, I realize persistence is half the battle in democracy, you just keep coming at it and you have a point of view, and there's a point at which I think we've already spent more than $600 of our time dealing with the $600 he wants back, and just, but we don't have the authority to tell anybody to just cut a check and make it go away. It's a bigger issue than that, and, you know, for the longest time, I always thought there were doctrines that prevented things from, this untimely, from being raised and then, you know...
Welcome to the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
You had something.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll be asking my questions, they're only going to be pertinent to, I guess, the two applications that Les filed. Call it a subject matter jurisdiction. It's impossible for us to go through the dozens or hundreds of applications that might be out there, so any review that I do will be targeted towards looking at particular discreet applications, examining the practice that's in effect now, rather than some retrospective analysis. If something now is being done wrong, we'll fix it, of course. If there was an issue with a couple particular applications, well, we'll figure out whether there are, whether there are remedies available.
I trust your guidance on that.
Thank you.
All right. Can I please get to my first agenda item? Yes? No? Okay. We have a joint appointment with library trustees, Socrat, and possible votes.
This is close enough?
Absolutely. You can sit wherever you would like.
You can pull a chair up if you'd like.
Hi, I'm Danielle Morrow. I am the acting chair of the Douglas Board of Library Trustees. We recently received a letter of resignation, unfortunately, from lifetime member and longtime treasurer for the Board of Ramona LaChapelle. And she was, like I said, a life member, so Kate Anderson has been appointed as, to take on that new role as life member, and we do have an applicant to fill the vacancy of an elected member, and that's Nick Socrat. He has sent his application.
Okay. And that will be until the next election. He'll be filling the vacancy until the next election.
Which is when?
May.
May. All right. And do you need to call their meeting to order if this is a joint, or...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We'll call a meeting to order. We do have a quorum.
Excellent. So you heard about it from a phone call from the existing trustees, they were actively recruiting you.
Exactly.
Nice to be wanted, huh?
That's good. I don't think I got any phone calls actively recruiting me to be a selectman. I think it's quite the contrary.
Anything I can do to help?
All right.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yes. You've already got my gratitude. Anybody that's willing to volunteer for anything in the town is very much appreciated. So I really don't have any questions or concerns, or I feel very comfortable with entertaining a motion to nominate the gentleman until the election. Do you plan on running? Getting on the ballot and running?
Sure. Absolutely. So moved. Second.
All right. It was made by Dave, seconded by Tim. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Votes.
Typically, you guys do a roll call vote.
Oh. Well, I wouldn't know anything about making a mistake on an agenda, now would I? I'm sorry, I screwed up. Roll call vote, please.
Tim, aye.
Dave, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Mike Uzey.
Then now it's official.
No, they're actually, no, no, no. They're going after them.
We're official on our side, so what you guys do, I have no control over.
Ellie Chesbrough, aye.
Danielle Morrow, aye.
Barbara Van Reed, aye.
Kate Anderson, aye.
Now it's official.
Now it's officially official. Congratulations.
Officially adjourn the library board meeting, right?
Considering how bad the selectmen's meeting's going, so can we adjourn ours too?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'm sending you a letter to get sworn in.
Suzanne, he'd need to pull papers to actually get onto the ballot too, wouldn't he?
Well, yeah, he'll be talking to Chris about that.
Okay.
I was going to put that in my email, too.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Take care.
All right. Item two, review and vote on amended cafeteria plan and possible votes.
Mr. Chairman, so we needed to update the cafeteria plan. For those of you who don't know what that is, it's a pre-tax plan that allows the employees to be, have their health insurance deductions withdrawn from their gross before they're taxed on the balance. So it's pretty much a housekeeping item. We needed to update the plan dates and the contacts in the plan.
Well, in your packet, there is a resolution that apparently you have to adopt first. Is that right, Cheryl?
Yeah.
And then, then you would sign, designate Matt as...
Can we adopt the resolution as appearing in our packet, or do we need to read it into the record?
I believe you can.
I think you can.
I move that we adopt the certificate of resolution as appearing in our packet.
I'll second that. It was made by Dave, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
And did we want to designate?
The resolution.
Do you want to add a signature?
Yes, can we do that?
Yeah.
Can't Matt's execution?
Make a second motion of adding Matt, or making Matt...
I'll make a motion to give Matt authority to sign the certificate of resolution. Second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? Is there anything else required before I vote on a motion, Suzanne?
Is this as for the resolution, or is it...
Yes, that's for the certificate of resolution, then we have an execution agreement.
And then the execution agreement, which one was that?
Well, this was making Matt signing authority.
Okay.
On both documents.
On both documents. Okay.
And then we also have the execution agreement?
We have the execution agreement.
Do you want to bundle that in, too?
I just added the execution agreement as, in addition to the certificate of resolution.
All right, I will have Matt sign it tomorrow.
All right. So just to recap quickly, we have a motion by Mike to make Matt the signature on the...
Certificate of Resolution.
Certificate of Resolution.
And the execution agreement.
And the execution agreement.
Yep.
Does that cover everything now?
Yes.
All right. So it was made by Mike?
Seconded by me.
Seconded by Dave. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you, ladies.
Are you skedoodling now?
I'm skedoodling.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You have fun.
Nice town meeting.
Happy town meeting night.
I bet you that they need the Every Dollar Has a Story lecture.
You think so?
I think they do.
I bet you they've gotten it over the years.
One more time couldn't hurt them.
That is true. That is very true. Have a great night.
Bye.
Better than us. I don't want to get that lecture again. Item three, Common Preservation Society's request for financial relief and possible vote.
In your packet is an email that I received from the Common Preservation Society member Tina Porter, asking the Board to pick up two of their yearly expenses, which total $500 a year. I gave you the minutes for the 1997 meeting, which the Board gave authority to the Common Preservation Society over the common, so they've been taking care of it with volunteers. Unfortunately, there, it's getting harder and harder for them to get volunteers to help take care of things. I also gave you an email from member Betty Ann McCollum explaining just how the costs are going up because they have to do so much more because they don't have the volunteers. I did speak with Jean, Finance Director, about the funding. She said that there are no available funds in FY19, but for FY20 and going forward, she suggested one of three options. One is to set up a budget line for the, for the society, for them to expend out of. One is to have Highway pick up the expenses. They do currently mow the common, and that is one of the expenses. And, or three would be to increase Recreation's budget to pick up the expense.
It's $500, that's it?
That's right.
It would probably just make sense to give them a $500 line item budget number as opposed to putting more on, on Highway. I'm not of a mindset to do that. If Highway's willing to volunteer their time to mow the common and they don't have to pay for it, then they can back that out and put it into a revolving fund or something, but...
Jean's going to be sorry she left.
I had that exactly in mind.
I was thinking the same thing.
Because then it sounds like a grant, which I, I don't know if you can do or not. I'm used to seeing it. I'm used to seeing a Rhode Island entity give grants. It's just normal part of the budget every year. But I don't know if the Commonwealth can do that. I'm sure you can, if you choose to. My only thought is, I don't know that the entity receiving the grant is really viable. I think they're having difficulties getting people motivated to put the lights out during the holiday season and do the weeding and take care of it, just because there are, there are some groups where people just get older and they're not going to be able to work anymore and they don't have, they don't have the time and the energy to recruit their replacements, so...
What if we formulated the line item on their committee or some other suitable group so that some successor group could take it over if they wanted to?
Designated by the Board.
Designated by the Board.
Right.
Yeah.
And did the line item that way?
I'm just hesitant to put anything else on Highway. Like, they really do a lot, and they way overextend themselves. And I know it's a small task of a little bit like mowing the lawn or whatever else it is, but I just, I'm very hesitant to ask them of anything else.
It seems, but this is a, this is a pretty nice site. It takes a little bit of TLC to make it look the way it does. There's a little bit more here than just getting on the mower and riding around. Just the weeding on those lilies that are on, the daylilies that are on the edge of the street, on that steep embankment is a pretty significant commitment of time, usually when the weather is pretty hot. So I'm glad for what these people have done. It's all volunteers. But we'll put a line item in the budget and then we'll just try to help this, these guys find people that might want to step up and, and do it.
Yeah. Does this require a vote to make it a, a line item?
Well, yeah, it would be, it'd be a good thing. Then I could...
Whenever money's involved, you better say, I'm sorry.
It has a story. So I would entertain a motion of creating a line item for...
The Common Preservation Society?
Yeah, thank you.
In the amount of...
$500?
So moved. Second.
Made by Dave, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion?
Well, I would just put a shout-out to all the other youth groups that do pay for fertilizing and lawn care that don't come to us. This is, this is a town property that does not necessarily have organized sports on it, and as such, is a special circumstance.
Yeah.
The history behind it, just so you know, is the land belongs to the town and they wanted to put a gazebo on it. And the building of the gazebo is what formed this society because the society wanted to have artistic license, I guess, over the type of gazebo that went on the property. And they were doing a lot of the volunteer work, building it and everything, and so that's why they came to the selectmen and to have it under them. And so they're the ones that also schedule it out and take care of it and everything. Yeah, so it's still town property, but it's just run by this other group.
And it seems to be quite the spot for pictures like prom sees, and you see tons of kids and everything else up there. And they do a nice job, it's, it's really well laid out. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Review and approve open meeting law appeal letter and possible votes.
Skip it out?
Yeah. Did I screw up? No, it wasn't me.
Oh, the short-term rental law advisory. Sorry about that. My bad, I circled it when I shouldn't have. So never mind that one. Short-term rental law advisory.
It's more of a discussion than anything else, Mr. Chairman. This advisory was sent along by our Land Use Council, Mead Tellerman and Costa, to apprise the Board of the opportunity to go to town meeting and adopt portions of 64G, which deal with short-term rentals, these are your bed and breakfast, your boarding house room-type arrangements. There's an excise tax of 5.7% that the town could receive or adopt the relevant provision at town meeting. There are also other authorizations of part of the law regarding licensing civil penalties and the like. It's basically the legislature catching up with the Airbnb business, and whether or not you want the administration to prepare a warrant article is the open question. Now, if this is the first time you're seeing the advisory, we can just put this back on for the 19th of February, but we are laboring against the March 1 deadline to at least figure out which warrant articles we want on, so...
I'd like to say, I mean, it's potential revenue, so I'd be all for you making it a warrant article. I mean, it's up for debate from the rest of the board, but my thought process is, you know, if a town land council and use came forward and said it's a good idea, then move forward with it.
Am I misreading this on page two, number one? If we've already accepted 64G 3A, we don't need to? Had we not accepted that prior? For the purposes of local tax?
On hotel rooms?
Right.
I don't know.
Because we wouldn't have.
We wouldn't need to do the warrant.
I'm trying to remember whether you had or not. I don't think we have during my term here, which is about four years.
I don't recall ever doing it.
We did meal taxes, but we haven't done this type.
Yeah.
Is there any downside to just doing the warrant article anyway, Rich?
No.
Nope.
And then did the three, possibly up to three separate votes? One, to accept 3A. And then there's a Section 3, if you look at paragraph 3, number 3 on page 2, there's a separate impact fee vote that you'd have to take if you wanted to. And then under number 4, there's a separate fee vote that you can take as well, so...
These votes are town meeting votes, correct?
Yes. And then in paragraph 5, it recites a seemingly new ability to adopt regulation, local regulations that relate to these types of temporary facilities.
Does this require a vote for you to move forward with this, Matt?
No, if the general consensus is to proceed, then your vote would be on the warrant article.
Right.
When I presented to you, just if this is a dedication of time, I'll do that. If you want the tax but not the impact fee or both is kind of where I would want guidance.
Both. Would you disagree?
No, I think...
There may be zoning implications here, too.
I thought that was the purpose of the state law, was to get around the zoning implications. I haven't read it until I just looked at it tonight, but I thought that that was the purpose when they saw some of the press on the law.
With your permission, Chairman, I haven't thought about the zoning aspects of it, but it's mostly just to get at this internet rental market that has appeared. And what's kind of interesting in it is it's not just for the... You want to stay in Douglas and somebody's listing a night-by-night accommodation, but you can also regulate and tax two or three family units that are being used for that purpose as well, so...
Well, we're a veritable vacation hotspot here.
Well, but the, to me, is the really interesting thing is down in Section 5A and B, I just kind of wondered to myself whether the state has thought about how this will affect the Section 8 rental market with motels. Not an issue for Douglas, but certainly as you go drive north, well...
So is that the... Are we in agreement on the general consensus?
I think so, yes.
Suzanne, two mistakes I made in one night. You must be all happy. Karma's just kicking me today. Are we good with this item? Is there anything else that we want to chat about on it?
Just for the record, I'll probably draft these articles to include 5D, which is on page 3. Require short-term rentals to be subject to health and safety inspections. Because if we're going to have basically a hospitality situation, you're going to be reasonably sure there's a way to get out.
Put a sprinkler in.
No sprinklers, please. I just want to fire his key. Chairman, you know, the real problem with that 5D would cover is that you have, again, maybe not in Douglas, but in some locale, substandard facilities that are being used to accommodate people that are supposed to have things like kitchens in them or at least kitchenettes. And you've got people attempting to live their lives with hot plates and styrofoam coolers full of ice, which...
That's not okay?
No. It's an insult to their dignity and it's also a violation of health and building codes, so...
I thought it was going to be like the college dorm room experience for a hotel.
You're going to have the rice cooker with the rice that's been sitting in there for five weeks with the lid shut.
The little water and...
You've got to do that. The smell is outrageous.
Go for the menu fridge.
Top shelf right there.
All right, I think that's clear enough. Thank you.
All right. Now I can say we can review and approve the open meeting law appeal letter and possible votes.
My recommendation is that we go forward with the Open Meetings Act appeal to the Attorney General with respect to the BBRS, even though we have made substantial peace on the substance of the policy discussion. And we've attempted to enjoin that policy discussion at a higher level in the political world to see if we can't get some movement on being able to outsource certain things in this town. The way the town was treated at this hearing, where we really weren't keeping any notice, the agenda was vague. The town relied upon the faulty agenda, so we didn't send our attorneys. We sent the town official who's not authorized to speak on behalf of the town on legal matters. And they acted anyway. Took a vote that they hadn't posted to basically threaten the town with certain regulatory actions. I don't really think we should let that slide. I think we should let the Attorney General decide whether that was a fair proceeding or not. And the fines go to their members and so be it. But we live by the Open Meetings Act. With every single thing we do, we shouldn't go to the state and be run over like that. So that's my recommendation, but I certainly will do whatever the board wants on this.
I support that. I'm not a firm believer of going somewhere and getting punched in the face and then walking away and letting them do it. So I kind of like this swing back. Any thoughts?
I'm in support of it.
Me, too.
I'm in support.
Need a vote?
Yeah, I would like to be able to tell these people that the board of selectmen voted. That helps.
Eagerly and very supportively.
In an open meeting.
In an open meeting!
In an open meeting.
Was it supposed to be a vote? What did our agenda say?
On tape.
Possible vote?
Possible vote.
Well, there you go.
With a public and moderately accurate agenda?
Make a motion that we authorize Matt to put a stamp on the letter in our packet and to send it in tomorrow's mail.
Eagerly seconded.
Made by Tim, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion?
Good letter.
Can we send it like expedited certified mail to really let them have it, or?
Yeah, the things I don't want them to get, I usually send snail mail. I might send this one faster.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So you are now authorized to swing back, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Firefighters contract MOU and possible votes.
Chief? Good evening, everyone. I'd spoken to Matt a few weeks ago. We have a gentleman who we hired back in June. He's a paramedic. We have him on the one group where we have three people. He's turned out to be a really good paramedic. I'm very surprised and very happy with the skills he has. But obviously, we're cross-trained, we need firefighters, too. He didn't have firefighter 1 and 2. And so we managed to finagle, and it's a six-month waiting period at the Fire Academy. So about October or so, we knew they were going to be having a class. We tried to get him into the class and we managed. They've opened another division of the Department of Fire Services in Springfield. So we were able to get him into that program. The other Fire Academy's in Stowe. It's the headquarters of Department of Fire Services. But roundabout, he's used to working between 50, the average of 56 hours a week. Some weeks, they work, with the way the schedule goes, they actually work 72. So he's accustomed to that paycheck. When you go to the academy, it's strictly a 40 hours, 40 hours a week. So, you know, I've gone through the academy. I know the stress that you're under when you first go there. First couple of weeks, you really don't know which end is up. Keeping track of your water bottle and your accountability tag and things like that. It's basically, it's like basic boot camp for the Fire Academy. So anyway, I talked to Matt because his paycheck would be substantially less. So, you know, he's got young kids. I don't want him to be worried. I don't want any of our people. I want them to go there, be able to focus on their work and hit the ball out of the park so when they come out, they're well-trained. So I asked Matt if we could possibly, what we could do to rectify that. And we came up with, he gets mileage, but he lives in Franklin, so he's a half an hour from here. And then the mileage is from Fire Headquarters. So it's like 51, 55 miles one way. So it's 100 miles of travel, an hour, at least an hour each way, that's if traffic's good. So I said, you know, could we try to at least pay him for the time that he's in his vehicle that hour? So that comes, it would bump him up to 50 hours a week. And then he'd get the mileage as well. And that would roundabouts, put him very close to what his paycheck would normally be. So Matt drew up the paperwork.
Brian Mazur drew this up. But for his employment with the town, he wouldn't be going to the academy. So I thought it was fair to give him the travel time. We never want to punish someone for getting training. In the modern world, it's not unusual to have a well-trained and experienced paramedic who doesn't have firefighter 1 and 2 and has got to go get it to work in Douglas. So I just think we have to, we have to get used to the idea we might hire a basic that wants to be a paramedic and we have to step up to the plate there, too. So in this case, the contract doesn't really give us the authority to do this. We need an MOU. So this is, you know, the key provision is item number two. Under the operating clauses, this agreement sets forth the entire agreement between the town and the union, and is entered into between the parties without precedent or prejudice. So this won't establish a practice. It's a one-off for firefighter sheen and I think it's probably a good idea. So I supported the chief on this and I hope he do, too.
All right, so this is just a case by case. As they show up, they each come in individualized and has no impact on the existing contract.
No, at the moment, this wouldn't affect anyone else.
Not at the moment, no. It could come up down the line. What we're finding is it's very difficult. Right now, there's a real shortage with paramedics. It's very difficult to get a paramedic. The last position I posted, I had two applicants. So it's very difficult. So we were very fortunate to get Dan. He just didn't have the skills. When I first started here in Douglas, I didn't either. So I was blessed with being able to go to the academy and get that training. And it's training he'll have for life and it's definitely going to benefit the citizens of this town.
Don't have any issues with it?
No issues. I know the Fire Academy is very difficult. Probably the second most difficult academy in the state, so...
Next to the State Police.
Well, funny you should say that. That's exactly what I was thinking. In all seriousness, I think we should support him in this.
Mike, thoughts?
I'm in agreement.
Yep, no. I do, too. I'm just curious, what sort of a great place to work? What is the commitment we get back in return to the people of Douglas? I mean, my one concern would be we outlay this money. We get him his schooling and then six months later, he realizes the job market out there and maybe an area closer to Franklin is of interest to him.
Well, I'll put it this way. There's no shortage of firefighter/paramedic jobs out there right now. We've had people leave. But he's someone who left private EMS in Worcester and chose Douglas. And I think he's very comfortable with the help he has and the people he works with. I think he really enjoys the people he works with, so I can't guarantee that. But there's a lot of firefighter/paramedic jobs out there. He chose to come here. I guess that's just how I see it. But there's a risk, you know, it's, paramedic can name their ticket these days. There's a lot of firefighter, there's a lot of paramedic jobs out there. Fire departments are having a hard time. When I first started, you had to be a paramedic to get hired in most places, or the past 15 years. In the past two or three years, the paramedics have dried up. And now departments are starting to go, well, we'll take somebody in paramedic school or we'll take a basic and, you know, get the true paramedic. So whereas he has that certification already, I would say the Fire Academy is very intense for 10 weeks. Paramedic is, it's a two-year project to get. So the fact that we have him, but like I said, you can't guarantee that somebody's not going to go somewhere else ever.
I think I knew that when I asked the question. The other piece was, and I forget what we call it. I know we talked about it maybe earlier. Firefighter contract, and I don't recall the resolution to it, but the requirement that people live in the town, that's not part of the contract?
We found that we can't make it exclusive to people having to live in town. That the state, the state is where Brian Mazur goes by what the state is, the state does in civil service. And that would be a 15-mile, 15-mile limit. We actually, in our last contract, you know...
Changed it to minutes.
We changed it to 30 minutes. You've got to be within 30 minutes of the department.
And with a tight job market, if you were to shrink that?
Right.
Recruitment would become impossible.
Well, I'm just wondering if you incent people to move into the town. One, you may increase the likelihood that he or she makes it a career in Douglas. I don't know if we can do that. But you do run the risk of educating and then...
He's in Franklin right now? So he's...
He lives in Franklin, yeah.
You're going to have a hard time incentivizing somebody to move out of Douglas, huh?
Well, it says, an incentive in the contract that says...
You know, I would say that while our hourly rate might be lower than some communities, our schedule, because they do more hours, it puts them at a higher salary range. They might work more hours, but they're at a higher salary range than other departments. So that's attractive, with the four days off a week, too, so... A lot of times, they won't walk away from that higher salary range, you know, because they have that, they know they're going to work so many shifts a month, they're going to make this amount of money, so many shifts a year and make that a certain amount of money. And right now, the paramedics, our paramedics are well-paid salary-wise when you look at the end salary range.
Let me fix some of that. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, because Selectmen Bonner brings up a good point. And I think the public always says, why can't you negotiate those clawback provisions? Are you going to pay us back or you have to stay with us for two years? And even the most fire-breathing labor council will tell you that there's a constitutional prohibition against indentured servitude in the United States. It doesn't matter where you live, you really can't get those clawbacks. They don't exist. So any benefit we put on the table for incentive, we would lose if the person decides to leave the town's employment. And that's the risk we take.
Falls under calculated risk.
Yeah. I know you knew that, but I wanted to just kind of like put it out there so people understand. All right.
So we have a motion?
I move that we accept the MOU as presented.
Can you designate someone to sign this, please?
And designating the town administrator to sign.
Thank you.
I'll second that as well.
Made by Dave, seconded by Tim. Any further discussion on this matter? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thanks, gentlemen.
Chief?
Thanks. Personnel policies, second reading. Has anything changed since the first reading?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on. Minutes for the January 15th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting.
How was your cruise, Mike?
It was quite nice. And I just want to make sure I go on record that I didn't blow that meeting up. I had announced the previous meeting. That I wouldn't be here.
Mike Hughes blew off. It says right there in the notes.
Mike Hughes someplace far better than here.
Absolutely. Something about an umbrella drink, I'm not.
Make a motion that we approve the January 15, 2019 minutes?
Can I abstain? Or will that throw off the count?
I'll second it.
Still have a call.
Okay. How's that? You made it, I seconded it.
That's welcome.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 I will abstain.
Will you do that? Good, sir. Your report, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, we're getting to the end of the lengthy conversation about joint purchasing group for health insurance. I'm going to circulate what is not the final draft of the agreement, but is very close to it. Attorney Bowen had some things that he wants me to go back at them with around Open Meetings Act. Treatment of the meetings of the Board of this group, because they will be subject to open meetings law, because the towns would be designating members of the Board, and it would be a municipal function. So, it's been a little bit difficult at times to keep the group focused on that. But other than those issues, the substantive matters of getting into the group, getting out of the group, the equity contribution, the manner in which the group will conduct its business, which is all subject to Massachusetts procurement law anyway, is fairly clearly elucidated in this document, which is based upon existing joint purchasing groups in other counties in the Commonwealth. This would be the first group of its kind in Worcester County, and we're looking at having three different members, possibly a fourth join. There is one outstanding question that I posed to Labor Council today, that because we believe that the plan design for a high deductible HSA plan in the bid documents was specifically designed to exactly mirror the Douglas plan in every regard. So, co-pays, and plan requirements, network participation by doctors, everything is supposed to have been identical in the bid documents, so that the carriers responding, or the third-party administrators responding to our bid, would actually be proposing the Douglas plan as one of the plan options in the overall universe of the purchasing group. The question of Attorney Mazur is whether or not even that mirror reflection will trigger impact bargaining with our collective bargaining units. My personal view is no, because the only thing we're changing is the method by which we procure and pay for claims coverage. And that, that's not a, that's a management right. That's, I think, most of our contracts basically specify that so long as the plan is the same, you can even change carriers without impact bargaining. For those communities that don't have those provisions in their contracts, such as our neighbor in Webster, where they currently are a self-insured entity, but they're providing a Blue Cross plan, that it's not going to be offered, because Blue Cross did not bid, therefore, they have to do impact bargaining, because they're, they're changing both the plan and the carrier. I think Douglas is in a very different situation. The crux of it comes down to this. Our renewal from Harvard Pilgrim, and I've said this in a couple of public meetings, was 11.8% increase on our premiums, which is devastating to our budget. We cannot sustain this double-digit growth in health insurance rates for very long. The preliminary estimate from our consultants, underwriting group, is that in the joint purchasing group, and based on the bids that we've gotten, we're looking at somewhere between a 1 and 2% increase if we join the purchasing group. That's the kind of thing that we just can't look past, that 10%, that premium number is a big number. So, saving that 10% is, is going to make a big deal to our budget. It also slows down the compounding growth. So, that's really the issue. You look at the end of a five-year budget forecast, and if you're going up 6% every year, it's a little bit more sophisticated than 5 times 6. It's more like 31%, but it compounds as you go through it. And that's what we can't, really can't sustain. It's just that constantly, every year, going up by the same geometric rate. So, that is where our recommendation, I think, I'm starting to include Gene and Cheryl in all of these meetings, because there are implementation discussions around benefit administration that have to occur. I would urge the Board to review this document in some detail, because I think we need a vote on February 19th at your next meeting, a go, no-go. And I think that's the Board's decision, not town meeting, if I, if I understand this correctly. The other thing I want to do this evening, we're up to our elbows in, there are three different documents here. Budgeting, what I've determined, I think, the clearest way to help everybody who wants to keep track, keep track, is every time I edit the budget model, I'll simply write a fiscal note in this format. Hopefully, it's always going to be one page that explains what information the town has received with respect to the budget that will change the five-year forecast that we've had in the past. And the three I'm giving you tonight, one has to do with Norfolk Aggie. Last year, we just took a number and ran it across five years. The fall, we just assumed eight students at a tuition rate, and we assumed that for the next five years, because we didn't have very good information from Norfolk Aggie. Sharpened our pencil a bit this year. We know that this year's enrollment is only six, so we over-budgeted for Norfolk in the current year. Three of those are seniors, so we could go down to three, but we shouldn't assume that, assuming going forward that we have two students matriculate every year, that there's a certain growth rate to the tuition, or growth rates, the transportation cost. We've arrived at the estimate. So, the model will reflect the bottom-line numbers that you see in that chart. And this is one of those places where a five-year forecast, it's helpful, because if you accept those assumptions, you can see that it's a pretty substantial increase in the cost of Norfolk Aggie, if we assume that, that two people go every single year, which is not really a crazy number at all. So, that's just for future planning purposes. The other two, one is a very wordy and lengthy and outrageously difficult to prepare explanation of the budget impact of a rollover. We had a staff member who was at a top step retire, and we hired somebody at step four. What is the budget impact? And really, for folks at home, it comes down about $4,500 a year is the difference of losing that senior, you know, experienced employee and hiring somebody new. But that adds up. We did two this year. We had two senior clerks leave. So, the second fiscal note will reflect the building clerk's change. And lastly, just a minor thing, but we have a technology cost increase, payroll providers, another $1,000. The bigger-ticket items are going to be streetlights, our wide-area network, which, for everybody at home to realize, this Thursday, there'll be various outages at Town Hall with our internet access and our, our servers, because we're basically taking down the existing Charter wide-area network that Charter owns, and replacing it with one that the town owns. Our existing IT budget for equipment was sufficient to buy all the equipment to do this change. We're just, this year, we got extra money in Fall Town Meeting. I believe we made a transfer for information technology. We're doing all the labor-intensive projects this year, so that the budget going into the future will reflect more of our historic trend. This was a necessary thing. I think I've disclosed to you already. We think we're going to save about $14,000 a year owning our own network and administering it, instead of farming it out, paying for services that we don't use. On the streetlights, we are going to benefit from substantial tariff difference and usage difference for our lights, and we're looking at that expenditure going from about $46,000 a year down to about $12,000 a year. So, the project has been successful. In achieving that, Gene and I have been both very clear to our service rep from National Grid, that if they don't adjust our tariff in timely fashion, because the town owns the lights now, not grid, so it's a different tariff. If they don't adjust the tariff, we won't pay them. We're going to pay the tariff we think we are supposed to be paying. The notion being that a town may not pay for services or goods that it doesn't receive. And we're not going to pay for the energy required to power sodium lights if we have LED lights, just not going to do it. I think the feeling is that we're on very solid legal ground on that, and so, we're going to, we haven't gotten any pushback from grid on that. They just, they were told they just need to hurry up and make the adjustment.
So, we own those lights. What happens if, God forbid, I hit a telephone pole with an LED light on it, and it falls to the ground and breaks?
So, we'll be.
You bought a light.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, yeah, first of all, your insurance, we'll make a claim against your insurance to recoup the cost of it. Secondly, we will be going out to procurement with a regional group for a service contract to actually do labor and put that light back up. We are taking our time with this first year, where we have mostly warranty coverage if a light bulb needs to be changed. So, really, it's that unusual circumstance that somebody takes out a light. Our own insurance, one appliance, maybe two, would be covered by a deductible, would be, we have to pay out of our deductible anyway. So, it's really only if you really, you really are a pinball, and you hit every bumper in the machine, and it took out all the lights, then we would have to figure out what to do next, but.
So, you've seen Tim drive?
Yeah, especially on Main Street.
That's right.
Dodging the pedestrians.
Yeah.
So, that's where we are there. I, this work is ongoing, so the, everything is parallel tracks, whether it's the personnel supplement, the capital budget, the operating budget. We're trying to give department heads some guidance, but really, their five-year budget forecast was the basic bottom line that they're managing to. If we have questions, we'll schedule time with department heads to review them. But we seem to be on track. I think the, the true wild card is the education side of the budget, whether it's BBT or our own public schools, and we'll figure out where they're headed. The bus contract is up for renewal this year. I'm pleased to say that the town has worked with the school department to retain a roots analysis consultant, a specialist. The schools will pay for it out of their budget. We pledged that we would reimburse them for that, because we want the town really to be the client, not the school department. It's, every time you do route planning, you need to do an efficiency analysis. There's just, every so many years, you should just get the specialist, put the data in the software, and see if there's any way you can cut a route or save some money, without violating the basic parameters of pickup times and drop-off times. This world has gotten very sophisticated. You can only imagine, the trucking companies and the UPSs and FedExs of the world have really written every algorithm imaginable for route planning software. So, there's, it's all been adapted for school bus transportation, and what they're waiting for us, for us to do is sign the contract and dump the data. That's kind of where we are. Rich is reviewing the contract. The very few concerns, we just want to button up their confidentiality language, and we want to button up the choice of law provision, and I think we'll be all set after that. Last but not least, I just want, on more or less a personal note, but there's a sign in front of somebody's yard here on Depot Street, asking people to consider taking an inner-city child for a couple of weeks in the summer. The program is called the Fresh Air Fund. My family did this when I was a kid, and I'm glad to see somebody in Douglas is pushing for it locally. If you live in a rural suburban area like this, and you, you give a kid from the Bronx or Queens two weeks in the country, they will see things and experience things they will never, ever have a chance to get, where they're coming from. So, it's a fabulous, fabulous program, and I don't know who those people are. I don't know them by name. I, I know that's, it's right across the street, the barn with the solar panels on it. I think he's a track coach at, at the high school.
Yep.
It's a wonderful thing for people to get involved in, so if anybody has any questions about participating, I'm happy to be a resource in addition to the people pushing for it. But that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any old business? Seeing is none. Do we have any new business? Again, seeing is none. Would be entertaining the infamous Bone-in-motion, if he's up for it.
I'll do it for you. I would like you to consider a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of possible litigation, and to discuss the pilot strategy of the town, and then to leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
Well said. Seconded.
Made by Tim, seconded by Dave. Roll call vote?
Mike Hughes, aye.
Tim Bone, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Dave Quintero, aye.